I'll ask Councilman Andy Gibbs to lead us in prayer if you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance as well. Thank you.
Mayor and file just thank you for this evening. Thank you for bringing us all together. Thank you for putting your arms around us and your protection. We'll just be with Councilman Carol Lord as he is not with us tonight because he is with family Lord with the death in their family. Put your arms around his family and himself, Lord, as they say their goodbyes. And we'll just thank you for what you do for us. Help us to make great decisions this evening, Lord, that moves our community forward altogether. And in my prayer, amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every seat adjusted for all.
All right, first up tonight, approval of the minutes, and there are many, the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, June 8th of 2023, from the special call meeting of June 21st, 2023, and from the regular meeting again on July 6th. Council, you've had time to look at the minutes. Are there any changes, any deletions, any admissions? Seeing none, that will approve all three by acclamation. Moving on to item three, local funding and requests. Item A, consideration of a request to approve matching funds for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, regional planting seed grants. Bradley Ayer, our Director of Utilities, will present. Bradley, how you doing?
Good. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is a request for approval to participate in this regional seed grant. We applied for back in October of 26 of 2022. Really, this is an effort to, continuing the effort to support the regional water quality and the environment. Basically, in your packet, you'll see kind of a scope of work that we laid out in here for the grant. The grant, this scope of work and the grant was kind of put together with assistance from the water planning, the regional water planning, Swanice Tetele, regional water planning engineer consultant who works for the seed grant to kind of give us some guidance, which is why we kind of tailored it the way we did. If you notice on the third page, it shows some key project goals. One is to identify septic systems in proximity of major creeks, tributaries, and provide educational materials to affected residents. One way that will help us is identify how many properties that have septic tanks. We don't have many, but it will assist us in identifying those. B, create a committee to update stormwater quality codes, standards, and policy improvements. In working with the engineering department, stormwater department, we will create a committee which would be, you know, could be some city leadership, could be any council member, some staff members, some other folks in the community to help us look at, you know, some holes maybe we have in the stormwater policy. We have some private ponds around town that are owned by individual businesses that makes it hard for us to police the water quality before it discharges into the creeks and rivers and what have you. So this may be something that will assist us with that. Also, provide educational materials to customers about illicit discharges, and then water quality sampling, and so on. This, some vaccinations here. The total grant is $150,000. And actually, it's $74,887 from Georgia EPD. Matching is $30,087 in in-kind matching, which would be sort of our time and efforts, and then $45,026 in cash match from the city. I recommend that we approve this, approve this participation in match, matching funds of $30,087 in in-kind and $45,026 in cash match, so that we can kind of give back to the water quality in the city. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions about the grant money, the match money, excuse me? No? Bradley, thank you.
Okay.
Council, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the matching funds?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. It's unanimous. We'll move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of an ordinance to establish qualifying fees and dates and enter into a contract with the Lyles County Board of Elections for the 2023 City of Valdosta Municipal Election. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, according to the Georgia Code 21-2-131, the governing authority of any county or municipality shall fix and publish qualifying fee for each county or municipal office to be filed in the upcoming primary or election no later than February 1 of any year in which a general primary, a nonpartisan election or general election is to be held, and at least 35 days prior to the special primary or election. And it must also advertise and run in the Valdosta Daily Times. The districts to be considered for election as well as the qualifying fees are: Mayor qualifying fees, $765; District 1, 3, 5, and at large qualifying fees, $474. An additional contract requesting the service of Lyles County Board of Elections will be sent to the city upon approval by the qualifying fees by the mayor council. The qualifying dates are August 21st through the 25th, 2023. The municipal election date, November 7, 2023. And a runoff election, if necessary, will be held on December 5, 2023. Staff recommends council approve the ordinance for the qualifying fees and date for the 2023 municipal election and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with the Lyles County Board of Elections to conduct the 2023 City of Valdosta Municipal Election.
Council, any questions for our city manager? Pretty cut and dry. Richard, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Council, cheers for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve this request as presented.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Richard, thank you. Move on to item B, consideration of an amendment to the City of Valdosta Animal Control Ordinance. Richard Hardy, our city manager, again to present.
Yes, the city needs to update the language used in our animal control ordinance and streamline it with the responsibility for dog ownership law contained in OC GA 4-8-20 through 4-8-33. The most important part of the change in the law was made to update the classification on the types of dogs and definition for the different types. The old classification was potentially dangerous dog and dangerous dog. The new classifications are dangerous dog and vicious dog. As such, we identified the portions of the ordinance where these are such, we identified the portions of these classifications and made the appropriate substitutions. Other than those substitutions, the only other changes are highlighted in yellow. Also, outline the transferability of any type of vicious dog. Our staff recommends council approve this amendment to the animal control ordinance.
Council, any questions for Richard?
Explain vicious dog.
Yes, I will outline, and I'll just read it verbatim as it outlines in the, it's on page 70.
The reason I ask, I have some citizens that dogs in the neighborhood are running their kids. The kids cannot come outside in their yard and play. Their dog might be across the screen. They run the kids up on their porch, and then by the time animal control come out, it's sometime three or four hours later, and they call VPD. VPD tell them to call animal control. How are we going to interact with this? I had someone that called me today on that.
Yes, ma'am. I can do it, Richard. All right, you may.
Okay.
Councilwoman, the definition of vicious dog, it kind of takes place, but a vicious dog is one that which inflicts serious injury on a person or causes serious injury to a person resulting from reasonable attempts to escape the dog's attack. Dangerous dog is a step below. It might, that situation you just described aggressively attacks in a manner that causes a person reason believe. So vicious takes it when they actually bite them.
Bite and catch.
A dangerous dog could also be one that kills another animal, stuff like that. So it's basically to bring it in line with the state, and it gives the Animal Control Board, which is a Lyles County function, it will allow them to classify those dogs. And in some situations where the dog needs to be euthanized, they're the board that makes that decision, and they're requesting these changes. So they can...
Okay, my next question is, if the citizen called more than one time for the same dog in the same neighborhood, what can be done to have that dog either removed or that citizen fined? Because the dog is doing the same thing every other month, and they are calling the law, and they're still telling them to call animal control. So how do we stop that one? How do we stop that?
Yes, ma'am. Based off of the ordinance, you know, those are the rules that will be applied if this, you know, as the definition states between the vicious and the dangerous dog. And there we have it.
But to a parent, if you babysit your grandchildren, and the dog is across the street, and the dog, every time you let your kids out to play, that dog come toward those kids viciously, and they got to bring their kids inside, they try to talk to the homeowner, and there's some little words said, they call the cop, and then the cops really don't even come out. They just tell them to call animal control.
And that's what they do. Call animal control, and animal control will make the decision based on...
But if the animal controller don't come out within the next two to three hours, what do they do about that? Do they shoot the dog, or do they just say, bring their kids inside the house and just wait on animal control three or four hours later?
You know, those are good points, but you know, the same, the recommendation is, you know, you call animal control, wait on them. If they're not there, you know, you remove your kids from that dangerous environment, but...
But you own your property, though.
Well, if the dog comes on your property, you know, that's, you want to make sure that they're safe.
By the time animal control come, the dog is back in the person's yard that owned the dog.
Yeah, there's ordinances which just actually didn't affect. So there's numerous, in the situations you describe, numerous citations that can be written for the person, animal at large. That, no, you don't even have to be vicious to be that, and just be a nuisance animal. In that particular situation, obviously, first thing you need to do, I guess, would make sure your children are safe. But I would, to the extent, that can be captured on video if they had a chance, and then when, whenever he finally gets out there, give it to them and assist. I got photographic proof or video proof that this dog is vicious or is attacked, and they give it and assist that a case be made against that individual.
Okay, I'll let that citizen do it. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Richard?
Does this bring us in line, the city in line with the county? So...
Yes.
That's the best primary purpose. No substantive changes except the ones in yellow. I was just switching those two definitions out and allow them to go forward. The yellow changes is to bring it in line with state law. Our old ordinance allowed for the ability to transfer a, at that time, a dangerous dog. This says you cannot transfer a dangerous dog, so...
Council, any other questions? Richard, thank you. Council, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We approve this agenda item as presented.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you, Richard. Thank you. Item C, consideration of a resolution to authorize the adoption and execution of a facility encroachment agreement between the City of Valdosta and CSX Railroad for the installation of a new 24-inch sewer main across the railroad right-of-way at the location of the city's existing sanitary sewer trunk line. Bradley Ayer again to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the 24-inch sewer main that we had that collapsed a few months ago, that we've been cleaning, video inspecting. We have a G-dot permit to cross the 84 right-of-way. This facility encroachment is for the crossing of the railroad right-of-way. We have a permit. Once we sign this, then we can have the contractor continue the work here. The agreement basically just is pretty standard. It just has items in here about, you know, protecting the facility, not using explosives, and so on. Having proper insurance coverage, and it specifies amounts, the contractor amounts that they're to carry. This is a jack and bore. We'll be jacking and boring a new crossing across 84 and the railroad, install the new 24-inch sewer main, and we'll be eliminating the previous crossing. And so I'll take any questions. If you have any additional questions.
I just want to ask you one little question. Exactly whereabouts is that on 84?
Blanchard Road, down by Knights Creek, as you go in east on Highway 84.
By the Pecan?
Right just past Blanchard Road.
At that pecan factory?
Yes.
Over there?
Right at that, near that intersection.
Then they put the cones up to make sure nobody went off the side of the road and clipped what they had laying there.
Currently, we have a bypass, the contractor has a bypass that is pumping the sewage from the main line under the railroad tracks and then down a ways into a manhole. So it's been a temporary operation for a little bit now, but we need this permit to be able to finish that work and get rid of that bypass.
The reason I ask, I thought it was because, you know, the railroad track kind of have a little roll where they turn into going to the warehouse area. I know what they were talking, and I saw that, and I was wondering if that was private property over the way those warehouses.
Well, we actually paid the owner for access to that property where the collapse was. Is that what you're talking about, that property?
I think so, yeah, because it was private. Well, that was on somebody, was it on private property?
It was on private property. We paid them access to be able to work and do the repairs in there.
Okay, I got that. Okay, thank you.
And do us a favor, and could you bore that a little deeper next time? It's a pretty shallow bore under the tracks right now.
Yeah, well, it's, and it's at a grade so that it can get all the way to the plant. So it is, kind of is what it is, you know. Actually, it's not very shallow. It's about 12 feet deep. In there, it's about at least 12 feet deep.
At the track level, it's almost surface.
Well, right now, the bypass is just right at the surface under the rail.
Yeah, that's the one that makes me nervous.
Exactly, yeah. We'd like to get rid of that.
Council, any other questions for Bradley? Bradley, thank you. Council, again, yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve this resolution as presented.
Second. A motion in a second. Any further comments on it? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Bradley, thank you. And we'll close out that portion, move on to citizens to be heard. It's the portion of the meeting we ask you to come forward and state your name and address so we can have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is our policy to follow through with you almost immediately on your concern. And additionally, we ask any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group and their comments, again, to ensure that all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time tonight? Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address.
My name is Rhonda Maxwell.
Good. Hi, Rhonda.
Hi.
Your address.
I'm sorry.
Your address.
It's 2311 Shatuga Drive.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. This is my first time here, and I just really wanted to address the situation. I stay in a fairly decent neighborhood subdivision, what have you, and I am really concerned about the streets. The streets are full of litter all of the time. I've addressed the situation with the sanitation department, and I don't seem to be getting anywhere. I'm just very concerned. I don't want to see the litter every day I come home, every morning when I leave. It's really bad with restaurant boxes in the middle of a four-way section, dirty children, pampers, pull-ups, whatever, and it just looks really, really bad. Not only that, but the trash on the, in front of everyone's home, the city is not picking it up like they're supposed to, you know, like the leaves, the sticks, or what have you, and it just really looks bad. We all try to keep our yards and things up in the subdivision neighborhood. Again, like I was saying, me and my husband, we may want to sell our house one day. I mean, and it just makes the property value go down. So I just have really concerns about that. And also, as far as the streets, there's a lot of potholes that need to be fixed in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a nice neighborhood, and that one vacant lot on the four-way stop seems to be all one of your bigger problems, too.
Yes.
But thank you. We'll get with you after the, after the meeting.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Name and address.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here for a very simple reason. I have a handout. I'm just going to hand out. I think I sent you an attachment too, but I'd like to have a copy as well. To follow protocol, my name is Michael Noll. I live at 2305 Glyndale Drive. I've been living there for about 23 years. And the simple reason for me here being today is that I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have about the mural that Crossickham Episcopal Church, which is right here in eyesight. If you look out the window on the northern side, excuse me, southern side of the building, you can see the water that's already progressing as we speak. This is a mural project that has been in the making in terms of our community, our church thinking about it for probably about two years. Just within the last few months, though, that we have the opportunity to actually get this project rolling. And depicted on the mural are persons individuals that we hope will provide the opportunity for all of us to reflect on ourselves and our society in terms of our successes and failures when it comes to questions like social and racial justice. And you have in front of you a handout, and I would like to find out if you have any questions or concerns about the mural. We have been able to present our project to the Public Art Advisor Committee, which was enthusiastically supporting it. We also got a thumbs up from the Historic Preservation Commission, since that's also an important question that needs to be considered, whether or not this is something that we should be or will be concerned about as a community in terms of the historical value, perhaps, of the building. But there was a mural on it beforehand, and we just have now a very large mural that is about to be done, should be done by about next week. That's the main reason, to give you an opportunity to perhaps ask me any questions or if there's any concerns you may have. And the other reason, the second reason why I'm here tonight is that I would like to ask the city council for support in regard to providing a surveillance system, just like we have those at the Martin Luther King Memorial, as well as in Ben's Alley, because due to the nature and the content of the mural, although we hope that will not be the case, there is a possibility that there will be vandalism, just like we saw those kinds of things happening with the Mary Turner marker, West of Ahira, and also some other icons of important discussions, really, so that we have a possibility to protect what will be, I believe, we believe, as a church, and I serve as the junior warden of Crossickham, so we can protect this public piece of art and give ourselves an opportunity to have those discussions for a long time to come. And I think I'm done with my time. If you have any questions or concerns, anything I can do for you.
Michael, we'll follow up with you after the meeting, but thank you.
All right. And one more thing, you can expect an invitation to a dedication ceremony at some point in August. We don't know the exact time and date yet, but likely mid-August there will be dedication ceremony, where we would like to invite all of you. Thank you.
All right. Any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? How you doing?
I'm good. How you doing?
Good.
That's a promise I return. My name is Lewis Gordon. I live at 2 Shannon Circle. I work with an organization called New George Project. Pretty soon, everybody can keep hearing that, so, you know, boom. One of the big things my organization is working on right now is decriminalization and changing marijuana laws in Georgia. We have 11 cities in Georgia, as of today, who have changed their laws to simple tickets, right, just citations instead of, you know, people getting locked up for it. I am bringing to the table, I want to have a conversation about what about us do the second step. We need to be number 12. There's a lot of good research on it, saves places money, makes the quality of life better for their citizens. There's a lot of weight that is put on communities of color by criminalization of marijuana, and it is something that, by the numbers, doesn't make sense to keep prohibition on. I'm here to start the conversation on it, and I'm open to talks or working together on it, however we can do it. There's a lot of talks in the community on it right now, so I really want to see what we can do to be leaders in this, in this area.
Lewis, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
George Washington, Ryan 504, Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I was meeting council a few weeks, months ago. I stood up and I talked about the Georgia flag, and some of you on the council assured us that our flag was up. I just asked you to go to Valdosta City School and look and see if there's a flag there, and that's one of the most expensive buildings we have in town. I'm not going to dwell on that much, y'all. That's part of history. But I will say that, as a young man was up before, the eye of this nation is on South Georgia and Southeast Georgia. I was called to Carthage County last week and dealing with the voting and breach of the equipment there, and I've been in three documentaries, two other people, two other agencies want me to be a participant in some documentaries, and I hope at some point to be able to provide you all with copies of it. But there's a lot going on. We may not see it, but people are focused on what's going on here in Valdosta. Not 20 years ago, 15 people were arrested trying to get the name of Papa Park name changed. I just hope that when the big trucks roll in, the camera much bigger than mine, that we can display flags as other cities and counties I've been talking about for seven years. You know, I remember, I know most people in Valdosta don't remember like I do, but I remember when the sheriff's vehicles had the Georgia State Flag, the Confederate flag on top of the vehicles. They don't have the flag on the vehicles now. The state police had the Georgia State Flag on top of other vehicles. They're not there anymore in Valdosta last time. The State Patrol of Georgia, they had it. The same way it was when the old flag was approved. And so I just hope that at some point, the people in Valdosta can understand what is going on. I could see a whole lot more because I do my homework about what the deal is. I have pictures with churches, buildings, and businesses that had the Confederate flag up, and I can get into why. It seems like this thing is much deeper that some of us want to address, but I will assure you that as long as Georgia is a part of this republic, I sent it a letter to the editor. They haven't published it, probably never will, but it's been published in other newspapers. I'm going to stand for veterans, and I'm going to stand for the commanders and the people and the eminent voting, because I've served 20 years, and I love the United States of America.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna...
Before we leave this, I just want to ask a question, just for clarity. We only think that I'm getting to hear from a lot of our citizens, and it's about the citizens to be heard meeting, especially since we had our attorney here now. They're saying, and I heard...
They're saying, and I heard you say this too and that brought it back up to my memory, that the policy of the council is that we will get back to you and that you ask that if anybody's gonna speak on the same thing that they had one spokesperson. It has been said to me that we don't let them speak. If one person wanna come and talk about, maybe say just talk about the building, another person wants to, they say we won't let them. Could I help you to explain the policy that every citizen, I have said every citizen come has an opportunity to speak regardless of what they're gonna speak on, that's my understanding for citizens to be heard. And they, I have dialed that back, so now that we have our senior attorney here or whatever, could we kinda clear that up? Cause some of them on the TV watching and that's what they've told me, so what exactly is it? If two people wanna talk about the same thing, will you allow them to both speak?
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I think it's, I was trying to find the, the rules, I'm not using the right term, of mayor and council that enacted that, this from some years back, that's in my book here, I just have to find it. But once I get, it's just an advisory opinion about what should happen to make it flow a little bit better, but if an individual stands up and wants to speak, I would caution, obviously I don't know the name, but I would caution any mayor that once they get up to speak, it's three minutes of what they want to speak upon, so.
I don't believe in my three and a half years we've ever stopped somebody from being repetitive. They've come multiple, they've come.
That's kind of like.
Three and four before. You'd like to change the verbiage, we'll.
No.
How's it up with the attorney?
I have said, I just tell them, anybody come, this is the city, this is the council, this is open to the public, this is for y'all, if you wanna ask any question, anybody can come in.
And I think over time, Mr. Robinson, some others have come with a similar, and I could, I could point out a couple more, but we've listened to each and everyone.
Okay, but they're not the ones who asked me, it was just, just some people in general in the, in the city asked me.
I hope it wasn't somebody that was denied.
No, it isn't, I mean, because they wanna go back to the five minutes, someone was saying that's not enough time, you know, three minutes isn't enough time to say or something like that and so I said, well, just get somebody else to come behind you and say, they said they won't let you talk about the same thing. That's why I just wanted to clear it up here in public now, now they know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anymore? Move on to citizen, excuse me, city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, council, we have a lot of things going on to finish out the month of July. On July the twenty-second, Saturday, downtown Valdosta, we're gonna have the Christmas in July, that's ten AM to two PM. On the twenty-fourth of July, Monday, the photo contest awards reception, Turner Arts Center, it starts at five PM. July the twenty-seventh, Thursday, seven-thirty AM to nine AM, coffee conversation with city managers, good coffee. You know, if you don't go to anything, come out to that one. July the twenty-ninth, Saturday, road cleanup, nine AM to eleven AM, that is twenty-nine forty-one North Ashland Street, Jersey Mike's. August the fifth, Saturday, nine AM, back to school block party that will be held at Drexel Park. That's all I have.
Are you treating us with the coffee?
Yes.
Everybody that come, are you treating the citizens that come out for coffee?
Come on, big shot.
Coffee will be available.
You and your deputy assistant, are you all sponsoring coffee for the citizens?
It will be available.
No, 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 I know it's gonna be available, but will it be?
Conversation's free.
Yes.
Oh, yes, the conversation is free. Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to let people know that they gotta be intrigued for some coffee.
All right, item seven, council comments, are there any council comments for this evening?
I have one.
Eric, please.
I just wanted to address the young lady that came up and spoke about the trash in the neighborhoods. This goes back to us holding one another accountable. I mean, we gotta keep our neighborhoods up. I mean, I think, I don't know if we need to get with the chief and we need to strengthen our littering laws because people throwing trash and diapers out, I mean, those are things that we're gonna have to address as a community. You have to be proud of your community, the sanitation department comes by once a week, but it's gonna be up to us as individuals to make sure that we don't throw trash out in the street and if you see it, I'm not asking you to put yourself in danger to try to get a picture of it, but if you see it, give someone a call. That goes back to being neighborly. No one wants to look outside of their house and see a neighborhood, see a, live by a field, so those are things that we're gonna have to do as a community as a whole if we wanna be proud of where we live. The young man who spoke about the marijuana, we did that the first year I was in council. We just didn't advertise it in the paper. We gave people sanitation, I mean, citations, those were one of the first things we did when I got elected. We just weren't advertising cause we didn't want people riding around, smoking and doing that, so there's a lot of things that we can learn about conversations. If y'all wanna just come up and schedule a meeting and have a conversation with some of the council, meaning members of the chiefs, there's a lot of things the community can find out. There are some people out here in the community that are now engaging in conversations that we like, they're holding us accountable. So if you guys wanna be a part of those conversations, just reach out to someone and we'll be happy to have them with you.
Councilman, thank you. Any other comments? I'll add a couple. I wanna applaud a great effort over the summer. Carlos Hunley and a learning loss program that graduated today. It was unbelievable, Councilman Gibbs, myself, John Lahood, Adrian Rivers, our city manager and deputy city manager were in attendance and it was, it was inspirational to see those future educators, educators and retired educators giving in their summer to avoid that learning loss gap. It was wonderful to see those young people graduate and to Carlos Hunley and that all volunteer board that puts on that program to advance those young people or even to catch them up, it was just fantastic today. It was, it was great energy and inspirational. Also, to follow up with what the councilman said, there is a cleanup this weekend, on Saturday, there's a river cleanup in the area of the Sugar Creek behind the Salty Snapper, that's the beginning point, we'll do cleanup in the creek until we get to the river and then in the river, a four-mile paddle to clean up more all the way to the Troupa Boat Ramp. It's from nine to eleven and if you ever wanna see somebody dressed nice for a river cleanup, come see Councilman Gibbs. He is very dapper when he shows up, but he puts in the work, without a doubt. So again, anybody who wants to join us from nine to one this Saturday, it's a, it's a lot of fun, but it also pretty eye-opening as to, as to what's making it to our rivers and waterways as well. That's all I got. I will now move forward and entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting and enter to executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate and litigation.
Second.
Move in a second, all in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. We're now at executive session.